Twenty-three, the order. Yes, there it goes again. The pledge of allegiance. I have a back if you would be able to see us on the beginning. I thought you were going to say goodbye. You know, this is. Thank you very much. Well, I did. In their zone. Please call the roll. And we'll have to hear the season. It is bad, so.
All thanks here. Griffin, here, covered, your Michelle. Son of Pharaoh.
Here.
Eo.
Here.
Eating, you know, the, or you.
Here. Okay, thank you, everyone. I'd see as a group of immediate minutes from our city counting on December twenty-seven, twenty-two. There's a monkey go book event.
And go go to the minute.
Thank you, sir. Monkey, that's enough. And there's a.
Okay.
Back. And it counts on the minutes. Sure, you're fine. And what else? Okay. All those in favor of repeating the minutes, if you'd like to say hi, please.
Say hi.
Of the posters. Thank you. I'm gonna start doing the minutes of agenda with the all those in favor of us. With somebody. We've that, or the student who used to do that a lot, he got involved in the open meeting there. Changed this during the pandemic, will get everything online and everything, but to the. Call my name, so we can move on and do that way. Um, we have free range participation this evening. And in the audience this evening is Bob Davis. He's the attorney for the Washington Regional Resource Management thirty. My fault. Um, so welcome. Justin, if you want to do an introduction. Yeah, I'm at two, three, four, five.
Sure, so in twenty nineteen, I believe it is, uh, the city joined Warma. Um, as a participating member along with a number of other municipalities, including Celine, City of Plante, um, Anover Township. Um, and and a few others, particularly on the, um, uh, eastern side of of Washington County. Um, through that organization, um, that group has been talking about a collaborative effort. Um, of bidding, uh, waste services, building trash, uh, recycled yard waste. Um, and, uh, that organization is asking if the city would like to sign on. Um, and participate in that, in that bidding process. Um, our contract with waste management expires in twenty twenty-four. I think it's, um, summer twenty twenty-four, um, so it'd be a little, it'd be a little while before we're directly impacted by this, but, um. Wanted to invite Bob on behalf of Warma to come and talk a little bit about it and that pros cons and, um, expectations.
Thank you, thank you for that introduction, uh. Your, uh, the community is is well represented, um, in in the form of by, uh. By what I thought would be the youngest person at the table, but I'm absolutely wrong on that, I can see. Um, but, um. She mayor, when you, when you try to say the name, you spent four meetings trying to name your organization, so.
So the top part.
It 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 really was. Um. I don't have a starting or ending thing for for this conversation, but but let me, we try to help to work it, uh, quickly and thoroughly for you. When we, when we started the Waste Authority, I had, uh, already been an attorney for, um, other waste authorities, in particular, one in South Baltimore, where we have thirteen communities. And, um, uh, that, that one I have been the attorney for for about twenty years, and been done some good things with respect to. What we're doing bidding and, um, and getting rid of some geographical boundaries on, um, contractors to bid on. Lots of, uh, of of communities as opposed to having you stop at property lines for communities under. And over the years, we had reduced our rates pretty significantly. And so when we started Warma, the the concentration was that we would, um, get a group together, because we had staggering contract dates, we would. We would really begin our mission by working on messaging involving recycling. We were trying to get messages out that were clear, concise, and understandable by a public. To try to increase the volume of our recycling and try to increase the quality of our recycling. Uh, we thought that was a a good initiative, because when it later became time to maybe do some joint contracting. We would be a recognized group who had very good, um, management over recycling. Um, materials in a group of communities. And so we've spent, uh, quite a bit of money, we've got quite a bit of grant money, we've, um, we've done a lot of studies, we've done, uh. Some good things to stay in Michigan. And and we're still continuing that mission of getting out the consistent message. So if somebody in the community can can converts over into, uh. Uh, or talking to somebody in Pittsfield, you can all be on the same page with. That burning question of is that recyclable? Can I put that in my recycling, uh, which which, um, this was often remains confusing in several communities. It's it's confusing where I live, and I think it's still confusing throughout the state. And then, and then a group, um, said, well, our second mission would be that's, that at some point we would want to. Potentially hit the marketplace with one or two or all of the group, uh, as a group, go out into the marketplace and see what what the, what the, what the group, uh, as a whole could deal in the, in the marketplace. Uh, with the bid process. And so year in twenty-four, there's a couple that are coming up in twenty-three, nobody's really there yet. But what we've done is we began, uh, the process of of thinking what that bid process might look like, and that's what I'm gonna talk to you about tonight. Um, I just finished putting together, um, thirty-six communities in the mid-Michigan Waste Authority. Um, part lawyer, part part psychologist, um, getting, uh, thirty-six communities to get on the same page with the contract issue. Uh, we did it, we ended up with two contractors, we did it, we ended up with good pricing, we did it, we ended up with very strong contracts. Um, the the way I go about it and the way I've been talking to Warma about it is that. I like to, in my, my bid processes with, uh, with waste services, is I like to have the. The RFP, but I like to attach. Um, what I think will be, uh, a version of a contract that when we're done negotiating and you, you're, you put all your, your snittles together. I want you to know upfront what I'm gonna be asking you to sign. And so it's a little bit, uh, in reverse, and 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 we have found over the years, it's been fairly successful to show the contractors. This will be the contract that that we're gonna be asking you to 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 put your name on. So as you, as you're getting your pencil out and you're putting together your pricing. Let's not just do the pricing, but look at the rest of the terms, look at what we're gonna want for insurance. Look at what we're gonna want for services, look at what we're gonna want for responsiveness, we're looking at what we're gonna want for liquidated damages. Look at what we're gonna want for a favored nation's clause, look at what we're gonna want for, um, keeping your trucks in repair. Um, look at what we're gonna want for for different services within the community. And, uh, and it's been very successful, so what I wanted to give you tonight is is a copy of the. Law that allows us to establish Warma and and what that law allows us to do. And then I wanted to give you, um, the general contract terms for an RFP process, so that when you have some spare time, you could just read through and 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 it'll give you the flavor. Of what Warma has been talking about, about. What might be, what contract might look like, if and when we went out, um, for an RFP process. This isn't the contract, you're not signing the contract, you're not saying you're gonna go out in this bid process, your contract is written through two thousand twenty-four. We're just trying to get a group together. That might come. Into date alignment sometime in twenty-three, twenty-four, where we might be able to take a group of Warma, maybe five or six. And get out into the marketplace and see what we can do. Some of the successes that we've had with the other organizations, as I, as I started to say, is that, um, you're big. You're you're big when you're, when you're forming a group. Um, the contractors, the waste providers, they like big contracts, so you're attracted. In terms of your body. Um, you, you're able to potentially give five or ten-year contracts. Um, you're able to give, um, certainty with respect to time of repayment as an authority. So you're very attractive in the marketplace when you, when you band together with your meaningful communities. About halfway through the Sopra contract process. Um, we were kicking some things around, and I said, why, why don't, why do we have division lines between the communities? If we're all part of an authority, why do we have to visualize? Because we would have the trucks running through Birmingham, and then, uh, when it was time to get to Troy, the truck would stop. Because they're, you know, Troy's Troy, and, you know, and and so what we did was we erased boundary lines. And we had the contractors bid on blocks. You know, blocks of of property as opposed to, uh, property rights. And when they put all that information into their little genius computers, uh, that really do their route optimization. Um, it 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 lowered the prices, because the the truck didn't have to turn around when it got to the, uh, to the boundary line. Uh, of the community, and we were able to let the trucks flow in a more natural way. And and get more of our our garbage collected on on the same days. So it kept, it it kept trucks off the road. And it lowered our prices by about seventeen percent, which we're there with that. So what we're, what we're trying to promote right now is the economy's, uh, of banding together. And potentially, uh, working towards an RFP process in the next several years. But I am gonna leave you with some general. Contract terms that that have been been worked on. Don't, don't get married to any of this, this is just, you know, very, very conceptual, but but pretty detailed. And I'm gonna leave you with a copy of the law, and I'm gonna ask you now if you have any questions on this direction that Warma is, uh, is undertaking.
Um, so I appreciate, um, what you said about the Birmingham joy, you know, the trucks, not stopping in the boundary lines. Who else are you talking to about this that's contiguous to us?
So right now, um, I have given this presentation to Pittsfield. Um, I'm scheduled to talk to the, to the pair of Ypsilanti's and Celine. Um, and you. And I think that's where we're at right now in terms of contracts that are potentially coming. To an, to an end date roughly at the same time. And we're all talking about carts. Services involving carts for. Recyclables for the, um, trash.
So what's your vision? How does this work? Let's say, let's say everybody's in, and we go through a bid process, and we come up with pricing and. Whatever, do the communities have the right to then opt out of that if they don't want it?
Yep. Sure.
Where does that say that in the contract?
In this contract?
The draft contract.
It it doesn't, because this contract would be the contract between the authority and the contractor. But let me, let me, you're asking a great question, uh, Mr. Mayor, let me, let me see if I can, um. Live in the imaginary perfect world. So the imaginary perfect world is where I'm at right now with Sopra, I have thirteen communities from Birmingham down to Hazlewood. All contiguous in that, in that band. The authority sits in an office over here. The authority maintains the contractual relationship with the service providers that service those thirteen communities. All complaints are directed to the authority, all payments are made to the authority. All administrative functions are made to the authority. So all the DPW directors are happy. Because they're not getting the calls any day, so, so the, 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 the contract that you would be talking about. Is then the contract between the authority and the community. The member contract. And and it would say something like this, it would be far less complex than this contract, it would be, hey, we're, we're the city of Dexter, and we pledge to give the authority. Uh, the right to manage our waste for the next five years. And then you get the chance to approve and review and be part of the process. Where the authority then goes out and talks to service providers who are gonna perform the services. So all the payment, um, all, you know, you end up, you, you, you would be cutting a check to the authority, the authority then deals. Directly with the contractor. That's, that's, in my opinion, the, the perfect scenario. That doesn't have to end up with that. It could end up that, um, that, um, you know, the, the, um. The authority doesn't take on the complaint aspect, so communities over time have said, you know. Kinda like to stay close to our people, and and I understand that, so we'd like to get the calls, we'd like to know what's going on. Um, I had that up in mid-Michigan, where a couple of the, of the community said, no, we, we wanna get the calls. We wanna think, we wanna talk to our people when they have a complaint. So, um, it it varies, and and what we've been able to do. Is in the contracts with the service providers, we have to provide for the peculiarities of the various communities. So, um, for example, um, Birmingham. Birmingham, very picky. No, you know, Birmingham's very picky. Um, and and some days, I think Birmingham would like a contractor. To go in and create the waste, put it in the garbage, take it out, and it runs away. And, um, and the, the president does nothing. Um, uh, there's a lot of curbside, uh, issues in Birmingham, and then you work your way down to, uh, Fergile, they have a different, different philosophy on their new services. But the contracts allow for the peculiarities of what each community is looking for, and that's what would happen here. So we're sort of in the infancy stage right now, you're very well represented, um. Uh, we, we get lots of input from Josh and lots of, uh, of good comments and, um, good input. And where we're at right now is we're just trying to see. What a contract might look like, you're not, not here to buy you to anything, or ask for a vote on anything, or a long ways away. Um, but conceptionally, this is, this is what we're trying to do in the next several weeks. Come on, it's gotta be.
And last, Jamie, you have a question.
That was my question, but I mean, I guess a follow-up, um, so. I mean, even with the, the municipalities you mentioned, we're still kind of an island out there, so is the thought that if, if we get in, then you can better position yourself as SIO, or is somebody else adjacent, like, are you trying to get?
We're trying to get the block. We, we have a map, we have a map that's a block, we're trying to get them all. But we know for sure it's never gonna line up all in one day, just like, just like all the authorities that star cannot line up on it.
Right.
Because everybody's in an existing agreement, or, you know, we still have one more year, a five-year, we have two years left on a ten-year. But eventually, we try to get it where everybody's on the same, we're all in at some point. And so, so we may, we may try to put in these contracts that, um, there wouldn't be any, um, penalty to existing members if. If in fact, this community finishes its contract, it can slide in under the same areas. So eventually, we'd like everybody to be in, every, everybody to be on the same. Five, ten-year terms, it's gonna take a while.
And and SIO is a, is a member of Warma?
Yeah, SIO is a member, and SIO is currently in a, in an, in an existing contract that I, I've worked with them on, with, um, GSL.
Yeah, well, I was gonna first move to suspend rules to allow, and you discussed to be on the ten minutes on the pro range participation.
I, I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a hurt. Remember, we're all good with that, do I have a motion, do I have an official motion to that? Oh, yeah, do that necessarily.
Okay. Um, has this been reviewed by the city attorneys yet? This is the first time we've seen it, okay. A couple of my little nitty-gritty comments is it looks like. Maybe a third of the spots where there are series, there's the Oxford comma, two-thirds there isn't. Um, I'd like to have that, because there's, you can actually lose lots of money without the Oxford comma in there. Process-wise. Um. It appears that this does not consider for commercial waste.
Correct.
We currently have contracts bound together, correct?
Maybe you have a, a single service hall or or both residential and.
So that's probably something we would want to have the opportunity to bundle, and it reduces the number of trucks. Um, personally, I do like. Us to be the contact person, I, I understand and appreciate. Should offer, I think that the folks that are here that get to do it would be very useful. Um, one of the things that I was concerned is that I saw, I don't have a paper here, but. Twenty-five percent increase in residential units opens up the contract. So that means if SIO and Pittsfield Township do twenty-five percent additional residential units. We're gonna be paying more for trash and waste and recycling, even if we do not add a single thing. Um, and I understand why they would wanna have that, I'm concerned about having us have that trigger pop it up for ourselves. Um. See. In the contractor qualification, uh, I work in in public spaces here, um. I didn't see anything that required background checks of employees, is that something you've seen anywhere?
We have, uh, we have inserted provisions that, uh, I mean. That that put some standards on the employees, but we have not, uh, we have not imposed on contractors how we do their background checks.
Okay.
But that's not, it's not how we're really.
It's, it's something that I, like, we see discussed, because these are folks who are in neighborhoods door by door all the time, um.
They are in your community.
Yep. Um, there is reference for performance guarantee, but not an escrow, so there are a couple of penalties here. If the entity says we're just not gonna pay for those damages after those events, what would the collection? Mechanism be with this contract?
You're talking about the liquidated damage?
Yes.
Then you go into dispute residue, which then ultimately into arbitration.
Okay, have, have you seen any of these contracts where you hold, uh, basically an escrow, like, they don't do it?
Well, under my current contracts, I have the money. You know, so there's liquidated, I always, I just don't get the money. So, um, I'm currently holding a significant. Amount of a major player's money over time, Eric Dyers.
Okay, so you basically put it into an escrow account.
Yeah.
Holding.
But it, it usually call them, they don't get them.
Um. I suspect one of the things that's likely to happen, and this isn't necessarily this contract, but. For our contract with Warma, is there's very likely to be a change in the date of collections. Just for their efficiencies. Um. And so this may be looking a bit forward, but one of the things I'm gonna ask is, is how we as a community can do it if it gets to that pace? Because if that moves around, that can really upset people. From Friday to Thursday to Wednesday.
And 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 you know. I don't take that comment lightly, that is future shoe, because we, uh, we have seen that the, um. The psychology turnaround to change. Your collection date to get the behavior in place for the new collection date. Uh, can be months and months. So when we, when we just finished up, uh, more, we tried and we think we did it all, but to the community, we weren't able to be. Consistent, like, because it was important to a lot of people.
Well, and it's something that will annoy people every single week.
Yes.
Um. Those were my big ones for now, there's also a lot, I guess there's a lot of language here on cards, and I know one of the things when we switched the cards. Was people thought the massive ones were ridiculous, overkill, or they didn't have enough space to have them. So I do like that there are three different sizes that continues.
Where we ended up recently on that issue, we, we, uh. To make the rollout easier, we did all big ones. On the rollout, and then we had a, um. Three-month, uh, amnesty period, where if you didn't want a big one, you had the right to get the next size down. Uh, no charge, if the students taking care of it. Then, um, thereafter, if you wanted to change it, it's all charge. But, um. We rolled out ninety-fives. On, uh, both recycling and, uh, trash for all of the communities, and you're right, some of them wanted to go down to, to the last lot.
Um, so one last thing that's not inherent, I believe, will pop up in the, in the exhibits that are attached, is one of the things that has. When they come in, and they charge us the fuel type. Where they're driving twice, be, twice what they used to drive, because they got the lift-off pit truck, so now we're subsidizing their purchase. Um. Also with that is, they frequently ask us for increases because of. Payroll or gasoline or those types of things. And I'll look at it, the company has engaged in significant stock buyback. In the terms of hundreds of million dollars, so I would hope that that's something that we would be in here, that if you are. That sad cat to put in to boost up your stockholders. We're not gonna pay to support that, we'll pay for our services, but you gotta manage to come back.
Understood.
Thank you.
The version that you're gonna get tonight will be different than the one you're looking at, a lot, a lot of cleanup has been done, so you may have. I'm, I'm gonna start keeping the version based on the box, so this one, this one is, I'm gonna generally. Because as we, as we have these discussions, I hear things run back, make the changes. Wait till I gather up a bunch of changes, issue a new version, based on the discussions in big projects. I'm well past my time, right?
Okay.
Everybody done?
Question, so what would be the process if, um, John, the community doesn't like the service provider and what's the other?
Well, the, um. That happened, so we ended up with two service providers, I have three and one authority. Um, and, um. We, we ran out of high school auditorium up in, in Michigan, and. Everybody had to come in and vote on which service provider they were gonna undertake with. Um, there was some people who were. I. Said they were adamant, they didn't want us. Um, they were lukewarm on why, but for sure, we were not dealing with that. So we had some of that, and so, um. It, it, the. Worked out well, because we were able to split. All of that work into two contractors. And, uh, Sopra, in the thirteen communities, I have three. And we have switched. People, um, um, Huntington Woods. Got a little snarling with their contractor and and asked if we could switch them to one of the other. And we recently did that.
Justin, the, the, yeah, we had here.
I have a question. City services, for which we contract with some D B contracts, now are we have, there's like, uh. A lot of celebration. If you can think of one now and think of it later, that's fine.
Oh.
Yeah, it has, uh, it has a move on that, I mean, the, you know, there's, there's plenty of organizations that we contract with, but. Organizations that we, we contract with, who sometimes. Uh, that's, that's a bond.
See, if you, when you read the law, you can see there's a section five and section six contracts. One of them is the authority has the right on the state law to contract with service providers. And under a different provision of the same state law, the authority has the right to have contracts with its communities. And you see that one. And so in effect, what you're saying is correct, you're, you're gonna be in a contract with the authority, the authority's gonna be in the contract with the service provider who services you. That's how, that's, it's exactly. Bye. And. Yeah.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Davis.
Yeah, pleasure, uh, we'll keep you posted, uh, I know you're rep, you should post it, and, uh, I'm gonna leave these, that.
That's great, leave a judgment, how good of, of Joseph. Uh, thanks. Thank you, Dan. Okay, we're down to either P or just approval of the benefit, because. Do you think we're in? We're looking to put it down.
Thank you. We will now move on to the agenda. There are no public areas. Are we down? Time range for this session. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this event? Either one, this, hold your station, name and address for the record, please.
Well, hi, Jeff.
Hi, my name is Chad Hill. I'm here. Because I was just reading that you renamed the horseshoe park. The second street park. For Paul Cousins. This might seem strange. We've. My wife and I have known Paul ever since we moved here in the seventies. The man is was amazing. Horseshoe Park was one of his accomplishments. And it, and it, you know, I guess it's a good. Horseshoe player, and you know, I've never seen him go down there from horseshoe, but that's not the point. Point is. It's it's a little tribute, my mind, it's a little. Paul Cousin deserves much more than that for the things he's done for this. I mean, he was huge forever. The, uh, of course, you all know, many of you, all of you probably know him in some fashion. Um, and the, the, um, outdoor lab behind Ice Hill, when he taught there, that was his. He had a big hand in the removal of the dam. As a board member, the Huron River watershed complex. He's done so many magnificent things, and I think horseshoe park was just a little piece. And I would hope that naming that part doesn't. Doing something more for them. And my suggestion might be. Mill Creek Park. South. When you had a big end in the dam room. All of that out there is a reason, what you see now, which is so wonderful. Is in part, at least, in a major part, the result of. Paul Cousins being involved with the community. And maybe something as. More significant like that could be done to honor the man and his history here at the city. There are probably, there are probably many things. But that's the one for me that comes to mind. Um. Paul Cousins nature, it's not really nature, it makes sense a lot, but two circumstances, anyway. Um, that's why I'm here, maybe even the trail through that Paul Cousins. Trail, but he wasn't as involved in that as much as he was in the Mill Creek. And the Huron River watershed complex. So I'm here to just suggest. That maybe, I'm not sure about reconsidering, but maybe some thought be given to doing much more for the man. Um, then a little leftover piece of property with horseshoe pits and. Um, so. Also, I wanna commend Josh here for the tea, for the sweatshirt he's wearing. Play the game, yes, sir. That's why I have to have this.
Thanks for coming tonight. That's your comments.
Sure thing.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Cousins. I want you to know. That. My dad loved, oh, so say my address, I guess my, I I'm the property owner of seventy-six forty-eight Forest now. Uh, anyway, uh. My, my dad. Loved horseshoe. But he loved it because it was called First Street Park. Because he thought it was quirky and funny that there is a first street. So. I'm gonna let you know right now that. From my father's surviving children, that if you all walk away with that park with horseshoe pits. And a portable job. As my dad's legacy in this town, then we refuse to have you do that. And we will do whatever we have to do. And we don't want anything named if that's what you're gonna do. And I want you to all look at me. Few people have said to me in my life. That I look like my dad. Will you look at me right now as the ghost of Paul Cousins? And you ask yourselves, did you respect my father?
Thank you for your comments, John. Is there anyone online that wants to speak with us? We moved out of communications. They don't hide our agenda. Okay, we'll move right into our first important night on our whole service superintendent. Did you get in there? How was it very nice?
So we got two before. There's any questions I can take those now and we'll get a few things afterwards. Couple of things, I started on the air bond today to start moving Florida out there and taking it to the dome, so. It's a muddy mess. It's it's a lot worse than that, but we're gonna get through it. It's gonna turn out good. The guys are doing a good job over there. Um. They up there, uh, in the new house on Third Street cross from the church that are working on waters who are there to put that in and install. So, and, uh. That's about it. Spent like two weeks, obviously, because it was the holidays, so. So there wasn't much on there.
Where was the frozen water?
So over here, right next to, uh, Central Street, right next to the entrance of BPW. Um, I went and talked to her about it, um, obviously showing concerns of it, because I don't want ours. I mean, I. I didn't think it was from us because as I mean, I call it, um, my understanding is that, uh, her landlord. Did something with the heating and cooling, the ductwork. And so an area where that was fine before now is really cold and they think that's where it grows, so. I told her just drive, I I said, if it was me, I would run the water, because he wasn't getting back in town for a couple of weeks. I told her to run the water a little bit. You know, just do a trickle, so once he gets back, then he won't have any problems, so. Knock on wood, we don't, we, um, we went to a program a few years ago. We had about eight or nine breathes about six years ago, it was. Um, and it costs a lot of money because, uh, one. Your news with Dan had never dealt with it before. He actually made the comments. I've never had this issue ever, so. So what we did was, um, we have, uh, we let people, those certain people, they run the water through the water, um, at a trickle. And he said, we had that, knock on wood, we haven't had a problem since. And that's not an uncommon thing.
Uh, next up this evening is the report. And fun, please begin the car, something in the building is irritating me this evening, so I'll do my best to. Make it through here and be quiet. Uh, you have my report in front of you, plus you have. The supplemental information, um. That was added and which, uh, Justin sent out this afternoon. Um, before I go into those, do you have any questions for the things that are on the report that was in the initial packet?
Yeah, I think I just had a couple of comments. Take them for what they were, I guess. Uh, yeah, so page fifteen, you on your general updates, you talk about, uh, the second. It's going to be delayed until. The master plan revision.
Yes, yes.
Uh, I guess it seems like it makes sense. I'm just curious, does that leave, I mean, we still have. You know, but one of the dear property is that property, I don't know, they're still trying to sell it from me.
Or it apparently has been sold. It was sold in, um, May or June. Um, uh, Don Darnell and his partner Paul, uh, his business partner Paul, Paul Gershie. Uh, everyone's bought it. Um, and I only found that out, uh, recently. Um, so we haven't had any, any indications from them, um, what they want to do beyond just what is being done right now, so.
Uh, and then the other thing was, um. Oh, I guess indeed. So it sounds like there's potential for them to be relocated to, um. Thirty forty-five, right? I thought that was a, uh, potentially an interesting solution, so. What we haven't had been following with their current location, so I was, I was interested to see that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there aren't any other, um. The supplement electronically, I did not print it out. So there, um. There is a new act that the governor signed into law, um, this past December. It's called the Residential Housing Settlements Act. Uh, you know how I feel about tax abatements as a tool in your toolbox. It's. The tool of last resort. The one that we hear about mostly is the commercial, uh, or the Community Revitalization Act, PA two ten. Which is commercial revitalization. It can also be used, um, redevelopment of multiple family. Um, developments, but mostly it's really geared toward mixed use. Um, and in rehabbing the lepaticated, older industrial type of properties, um. It's a good tool, but it's still a tool of last resort. This new act, the little bit that I know of it, and I'm trying to get and look, is it just. I mean, it's brand new, um, appears to be much more targeted. And at first blush, it appears to address that very small area. That that most people have trouble with. You can do market rate all day long. There are also very skilled developers out there doing, uh, uh, low and moderate income. Uh, and so it's like, but that workforce, that attainable housing. That's been a difficult thing to, to find a way to do. Um, because land is expensive, materials are expensive in. Most communities, unlike Dexter, the first thing they have an aversion to is density. We look at things a little more comprehensively and a little more open mindedness. This could be a tool that. That could be used, that we do take out of the toolbox. If it's going to be that attainable, because it allows for, um, um. Someone living there that's got no more than a hundred and twenty percent of the median coming in. It also caveats that. The rent can't be more than a third of what that person pays out of their, uh, out of their, uh. Uh, monthly salary going toward their living, uh, accommodations. Um, like I said, I don't know a whole lot about it yet. But I want you to at least know there is this new tool, and don't be surprised if. Once we get more information, if it is the way it looks at first blush. It, I'll be talking about it in a different way than I do about the other tax abatement. Yes, sir.
I'm going to read through that. It said, you have to designate. Area, you have to, is it like, can you just say all your residential is covered? Select an area?
You could. You can also be very selective, um, um. If you could literally set up your district. If a development was coming in, um, and you, you. Uh, were supportive of the location, et cetera, um. I I probably would not suggest that you just deem the entire. City an area for that, um, um. I think you can see that that could have some issues. Um, but for example, the, it's not uncommon for tax abatement type. Um, um, mechanisms like this to require that district to be set up. It it's been set up for the industrial part. Um, there are a couple of, um, one offs. Where you set up individual industrial districts, um, where the air property was being sold, um, Mr., um. What's his name? I can see his face. David Dyer's brother. I can't remember. He does. He came in and and counsel created that property as an industrial district. I believe the property out on, um, the number five where Dexter Research is, is also. Uh, an industrial district. Um, so you can either do it as a very large area with multiple properties, or you can target it. And it may be the same way, um. Thank you for the rep, that was something about this. Okay. Uh, we're gonna have a new jewelry store. We haven't had one in. I think since about twenty sixteen, the one that was on Broad Street, um, closed, and we haven't had one. Uh, the gentleman's name is Speed Churchen. It'll be Churchen's Jewelry Store. He's a custom jewelry, his own business. It's been in the jewelry industry for twenty years. He's been a venture on his own, and, um. I've talked with him today and, um, his dad on Friday, and he and I exchanged emails over the last month. They made it official with some of your leads, and they're going to be in a little repo space. That used to be where the general bring out their, uh, retail store, so. Uh, we don't have an opening date for it yet, but, um, as soon as we know what that is, um, I'll make sure they know it. Uh, but it, he, it's about two months from now, so. Um, and then there's just some minor updates on the Broad Street, um, redevelopment area. We've applied for a thirty-two thousand dollar in change grant. From the Washington County Broadfield Authorities Environmental Assessment Program. It's to do the phase two VEA and due care activities that are associated with the five parcels. Common sale would be one, um, having somebody do that, and, um, the, um, the. If Washington County approves that, as a governmental unit. We would qualify for that. Um, the meeting is on Thursday and staff will be present. And then there is a thirty forty-five Broad Street committee meeting. Excuse me, with common sale, and that's been scheduled for Tuesday, the twenty-fourth. And that's just an update of the date, the, uh, the reason for the meeting is all spread out in the initial. In the initial report. So if you've got any questions for me, oh, one other, the DDA committee that's gonna review. The, um, proposals, um, I'm anticipating that that meeting is going to be at, um. Eight o'clock on Friday morning.
Yeah, um, we've heard a lot. Someone asked me this today, and I was wondering myself, so I'm, I'm gonna ask you. It's the update for the status of the subdivision ordinance amendment. Are we at in that?
Um, it's so, after, I think it was back in November, your second meeting in November, roughly. Um, um, I was to meet with, uh, Sean and Justin to go over some of the. Questions, um, with the holidays, schedules, it hasn't worked out. Um, so we're, we're going to be steadily letting you answer the questions. Um, my hope is that, um. Uh, we'll be able to put the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance updates on for.
Okay, my next is gonna be the zoning ordinance, um. The zoning ordinance, we don't need to have a public hearing here.
Correct.
And that's ready to go. As I recall, we didn't have, this council didn't give any direction. We talked for an hour, but we didn't say change this.
Right, there's still, there are still questions. And so I need to sit down with the mayor and Justin, make sure that the questions that, uh. He has, and anybody else that has any questions, I'm happy to sit down with you, so that you have a clear understanding. Um, of what. The intent of the changes, and the impact of the changes, so that when this does come in. If you're not comfortable with that, you know what direction you'd like to give staff to get to plan. Or if you do get comfortable with that, then you're able to move forward.
Yeah, so to clarify then, the, the document that we will see will be the one that was forwarded by the commission without any changes.
Yeah, there's, there's no changes happening.
Okay, thank you. But, but, and. That goes for all of us, if you have any questions and would like to sit down with, with Michelle. That, that doesn't matter.
Absolutely, I want to make sure that. When it comes to you, it's a productive, you're comfortable, and if you're not comfortable, you're able to. Articulate the direction you want to move to plan, I think that's.
There were a couple vocal residents that woke up and then passed that. My intention is to try and get some of their questions answered that were left.
Right, thank you.
But there's no bold highlighted, please.
Catbird is doing some modernization, we, we have tasks. Some folks were setting up automatic reminders for the calendars, which we haven't done, because we're kind of old school. We did have a meeting, it was kind of nice, we got to talk about direction and working on hardware, our schedule off. Off months, because we know we have holidays and it's making it a bit more predictable and easier for folks to participate. And it looks like the big, interesting topic across jurisdictional boundaries, we often have the conflict of what the cities, Dexter and Chelsea aren't interested are different. Than what the townships are, there, there is some crossing, but it seems like everyone's really interested about trails and trail towns. A more robust infrastructure to support folks and support those activities.
Seeing nobody else. Well, the major groups and manager work, Justin.
So did just a couple of, a couple of things. Included in the packet, as the technical report, we did get some letters from students that looked like they were part of a school assignment. The governor responsible to those students. We do have a draft of a newsletter in the packet, we'll get that out this week. There have been some, some minor tweaks since this went in the packet. One thing is, I, I think we're. Looking to minimize the, the number of submissions that we're getting for what we love about Dexter. That we've gotten over a hundred and the, the folks who are working on the backend of that, for the Earth's Culture and Heritage Committee, that's a lot for them to handle. So they're looking to not get too many more. Which is, is good, and we've got many people who have submitted here. Michelle brought up. The jewelry store moving into the old Hotel Hickman space. Just a little while ago, we approved. The new contract with Hotel Hickman for the lease that paid. At the time, council had brought up. Wanting to discuss. If that, if Hotel Hickman has a business sold to somebody, whether or not we'd want to see that contract back into the council. And so I just wanted to bring that up and, and see if that's what you'd wanted to see again, or whether we're okay with just moving forward, continuing the lease with Hotel Hickman as a business.
That, well, as I recall, the contract was actually written between the proprietor of the business and not the LLC. And there's language in there that says this is not transferable, except upon approval. Of both bodies, and so I think we have to do it. I don't, it doesn't mean I want to, but I think the terms of it say that we have to, that you're, you're not able to suddenly system without. Approvals or transfer without approval.
There are some, some references to, to questions that staff achieved, that the council included in the, in the supplement. That was sent out late this afternoon. Got a couple, had any, had any additional questions, or if you wanted to bring up primary questions. Happy to highlight those. Otherwise, that's the thing.
What, what are you hearing as the latest date here?
So they, they are making progress and are filming for the end of January to be substantially complete with construction. We're hoping that we can start moving by mid, mid to late February, probably after tax review. Because we don't want to interrupt that process or make that process any more confusing. But we have started packing the non-essential items of the, of the current office. And if you have a chance, we can, I can show anybody over there who'd like to see it. They're working on the vestibule, the elevator is, is almost done. They have another couple of days left on that. The countertops are in, and they're framing out the, the conference room. Initially smelling here, it has a boat working on painting in here.
I have a question, I might put your one in the appropriate time to bring this up, so I'm going to do it now. In light of Mr. Hudson's comments, and I guess Mr. Hill's comment, I just took a look at our council rules. Recognizing I was not asked last meeting, I was not able to vote on the renaming of the park. Rule eleven says reconsideration of question, when a motion has been taken, it shall be in order for anyone revoting with prevailing side to move favor consideration thereof at the same or next regular meeting. But no question shall be considered a third time. So I don't know, does it, if you're able to provide guidance, if somebody on prevailing side of that motion wanted to. Move to reconsider it. How they go about doing that at this meeting, is that, I mean, emotions can be made at any time during the meeting, or?
So prefer you, you would probably want to amend the agenda. To add it as an item.
And that could happen at any time.
That, that could happen at any time. And then you can, someone may have been assigned that.
So anybody can move to on the agenda. For that topic, but only somebody who was on the prevailing side could make a motion to. Repub for it.
I believe so.
I would like to, I guess right now, make a motion to amend the agenda so that. I guess, I don't know, I would just add it at the end. Reconsideration of, I'm going to think, we should be up and down. I'll just call it, we just put it at the end, I'm for reconsideration of. Remaining on First Street part to Paul Hammond's part. If anything, for just for purposes of discussion.
Is there a second? There's motion by Griffin to add an agenda item. So again. Name of the session. Yeah, this is called the vote.
Yes, Son Pharaoh.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Hubbard, yes, Griffin, yes.
Yes. That's sort of added, your business added on three. Okay. We'll still under the city manager report then.
I just want to make a comment that I really appreciate between the holidays and the beginning of the year and all the things coming in. How fast you all moved on, changing my name on everything possible, and, and we'll be that forward for citizens to know that, so I appreciate that.
Zach, just a note. I hope staff is prepared that working in individual rooms will be very different. From your previous work position, and then everybody's getting ready for that, it will be a bit of an adjustment. Don't be sad. Just think of this opportunity to work with your group partners in a different way, but it will be different.
We're, we're already talking about ways to continue open communication despite being in individual offices. Yeah, there, there is allows for quick calling, but other things like. Instant messaging and. We can staff meetings and things like that.
See, no other questions for Justin, I'll move on to my report. I proposed two goal-setting dates. Saturday and each month of February and March. Some alternates, any on second Saturday. Who's curious if I ever had a chance to look at their calendars. Worked well or not well?
So when, when Dan called earlier, he was going to make it, he didn't say that it would be available January twenty fourth to February third. But the third is the, that Friday.
So it wouldn't be there.
He would not, he would not be there.
There. With first and third Saturdays of Dexter Forum. Okay, I'd like to just get those firm done, if anybody figures out how to pass it through that, otherwise it's not good on a calendar, they're showing along with that. I did have some recommendations for reform. For the Arts Management Committee, as well as the ultimate B E A position. If anybody were that, if there are questions, I'd have to take it now, we do have an application. For the Department of Labor to be there, came in on Thursday, so. Meeting is there. So we're getting there. If there are no other questions, or there are any council reports, we're all other ideas. Okay, we're down to the second agenda.
Okay, I'll move, we approved three items on the concept agenda, those are favorable. The amount of one hundred and fifty eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars. Setting dates for the board of review meetings and appointments for state committees.
Okay, motion by what? Yeah, there's called voting approval to the second agenda.
Hubbard, yes. Griffin, yes. Michelle.
Yes.
Alday, yes, Son Pharaoh.
Yes.
Heo.
Yes, motion carries, thank you, we're down to item L, which is, I'm finished with this discussion slash consideration of city council rules. Yeah, and. Like author, first of three motions. First is to amend the motion, or amend the country rules by the two point three orders of business to. Do not arrange participation, declaration, comfort, prior to the group agenda. And to add a post agenda item, final non-earlier certification. Say that one more time, one?
Yeah.
Just so I can call up, it's simply the whole, yeah, it's what's in the pack. From the market side, okay, maybe not arrange participation and declaration of that's before we go to agenda. And then heading up to the agenda. Okay.
One second.
We buy some, so I can write some on.
Zach. Yeah, just a, a point of order, when Mr. Self Pharaoh introduced his draft rules, he had seven to ten minutes to describe them. I have not had the same opportunity for my draft. With respect to the proposed revision. A lot, I don't believe that non-arranged participation, as we've used it, is really deserving of an individual item. The, for example, the item here should have been a part of staff or should have been its own agenda item, when you think to spark. It's, it's really something that we're doing, it's not a community group that comes in and does something. It's also would be a challenge. To determine if you have a conflict of interest before the agenda is adopted, because there may be something that you do, and if it's taken off. Then you no longer do, likewise, you could have something added to the agenda that you may have a conflict of interest. And you won't know that until it's done.
So I. Hey, hey. Let's go with this. This even being a, a part of the order business, because I think it's. It's always gone without saying that if you feel you have a conflict of interest, it's up to you to declare it, this is a helpful way of, of noting that and getting it in the record. But it still comes down to everybody to do it, so where it is on the agenda. That's just the nicety that you got, from my perspective. I mean, I agree, whether you have it before or after, it could give benefit to saying, hey, there's something coming up, I'm telling you, before we approve the agenda, I've got the issue. If after we approve the agenda, then you state it, I can see the benefit both ways, whether it's in front of it or behind it. But it still comes down to the fact that somebody, if they feel they actually have a conflict. It's up to them to mention it at the time prior to getting to the agenda, we've just created a spot to document, so. I think it should stay on the agenda, whether it's ahead of it or behind it, I don't have a big loss there. There's no loss or gain to me. Don't. So the. Rational behind that is essentially exactly why I'm here tonight. We had one marine participation and. We interrupted the flow of meeting to say we want to amend the meeting, amend the agenda. That's the entire point of moving public participation before the agenda was approved. So that those things can be taken into consideration. As far as the declaration conflicts goes. The intent, again, is exactly to mitigate the issue that has been raised as problematic. And that is to try and address those conflicts. So that they can be addressed as best as possible. Everybody should, I'm counting to be able to participate to the maximum possible. And anything we can do to address those type of concerns and maybe mitigate them, we should be able to. After the agenda's already passed. Shy of saying you're gonna stop and amend the agenda to do something else, you don't have. There is.
Yeah, I have a general comment about. Pre-arranged participation, I guess, I am fine moving all public participation in advance of approval of the agenda. I can see declaration of conflict of interest either way. I think my question about pre-arranged participation is that often it seems like the way it's utilized is to. I think, to make to the point that Doc was making, is staff is invited. A representative of an organization, the board committee, and makes a presentation to council. And during that time, council typically engages in some amount of discussion with that representative. Now, I saw that happen at Planning Commission when reps from Common Sale were invited during that time. And I sent a follow-up email to staff saying, it wasn't clear to me that pre-arranged participation. Was the most appropriate place on the agenda for something like that, and maybe we've talked about this, about this before, because it seems to set up. Like a double standard, or at the very least an unfair standard of when the body is going to engage in conversation with. The person. The person presenting that information or those comments and when they're not, and in my experience, when it's a random resident. Who's asked to be on the agenda during prearranged participation. The body does not engage in conversation with that random resident, when the person who has been invited under prearranged participation. Speaks. The body is willing to engage in a conversation, so it seems to me it sets a more clear expectation that if in fact. Staff or council has made some invitation to a representative of the group. That should just be a comma, an actual item on the agenda or discussion under consideration. Otherwise, it seems. To me, it seems like there's bias in how prearranged participation is being used. So my preference is either um that prearranged participation. You know, pretty much always be following the the limit. I I would just rather that be more consistently moderated by the chair of a meeting, personally.
It's just always been a way of getting somebody that has something. Light bulbs presented today out in front of. You know, here and here and past instead of making it a way that you'll play it part of the agenda.
Yeah, I guess my preference is that just becomes a discussion item. And if we are worried about how long people are waiting to speak, then I think, you know, at one time we talked about. Both being ex-ol staff before and things like that came after business, so then anybody who was here to listen on a business, they, you know, but then it was decided. People liked that somebody sitting through a meeting could hear all that, or maybe there was conversations that took place in that context that helped inform what was happening during the business part of it. I mean, this particular motion I won't be able to support because I'm not in favor of a proposed agenda item, I think we have a mechanism in place for. Deciding, I guess, if council wants to consider an item. By way of the rule of. If somebody wants to remove an item from the. But I I definitely appreciate, there's a lot to digest in these rules, and I don't only know the best way to do it, but it seems like breaking it down into very small. Components is probably gonna be the best way to get through it, because they think for a lot of people it will come down to a specific aspect of the rule. As much as one complete that.
Yeah, um so for the part that um, you know, I agree with Joe on the. The two parts from the the beginning, basically moving um the. Moving the approval of the agenda after the participation and declaration of like that interest. Um also on, so that I've been taking explanation, because that's basically what I was thinking as well, um. I really like the idea of proposed agenda at the end of an agenda item, I have been in a couple um different boards and um. Meetings that do that, it is very helpful, no, uh the the purpose to me is not to say we can't, if. Somebody wants to add an agenda item in between meetings to, they can't do that, or. Um that if something needs to be, we want to be removed from an agenda to to do that either. I found it very helpful in the meetings that I have been in, that it allows additional time for those who. You know, the the board members or council members to um to have that additional. Um time to to think about the topic, if they want to do additional research, to do that additional research. If they want to reach out to residents or constituents, they can do that, so it just provides that additional time. And true, not every time we'll remember something and then something comes along and we're like, oh, maybe we do that, send the request. To the city manager and the mayor and to be added later on, but that just provides an opportunity for something um that um. Can give, provide more time for everybody, including the public if they want to to know more about.
Other questions, comments on the motion? Okay, so the motion by Joe, second vice now. Right now to move nonarranged participation and preparation process to vent this to a head of approval of the agenda. And add proposed agenda items. After the last. Nonarranged participation before um the journey. And also second has been required. It's hard to understand some of them.
Yeah, can I just? I just want to confirm that moving or adding a proposed agenda item, I mean, I understand um it's an honest point. About the value of perhaps regrouping at the end of the meeting to figure out next step. I think Justin has worked towards that in his reports, where at the end, you have the table of, you know, upcoming agenda items. If the thought is that a discussion type item where we're all just brainstorming. Continue populating that or reviewing that or asking questions about that, throw on maybe to the next meeting, I'm totally in favor of that. If, you know, so I just want to be clear that a vote to support that isn't a vote to. Say the only way and I understand the agenda is if you're during the post agenda. It reads that way in different parts of the post rule, so I just. And I don't want to cover it at all.
Right, and this is strictly people we treat in either set of. But when not moving and taking office, there's J to keep in mind. There you go. Sorry, right. So it would just be exactly what you said, that was it.
Adding it, but not describing it.
How do you intend, how how bold is your intent of adding a post, you said, the proposed agenda topic? Just for a customer, have an opportunity to propose agenda. Would they be voted on at that end, right? If you, so how how does it work, how does it work procedurally, the strategy works procedurally, but right now on Monday or by Monday at five o'clock. Did I have a chance to submit something to go on the agenda? So that chart is the same?
We hear it says it has to go on the proposed agenda, and then you go on it, and it gets on the next agenda, okay, that's what I was thinking, I just wanted to hear something else repeated back there.
Well, no, what I said in the motion was two point three. The order of this, yeah, and that does not include that description. So we. So we're just adding up a part of that.
We're adding this on the agenda for proposals and agenda items.
Okay.
I recommend the motion to add council member reports back in and to add and to relocate council comments to after nonarranged participation.
The council comments after that, right, so it will be between the current O and P in the motion. Does everybody understand the motion about that? There's that, what they done?
I'll second that.
So I'm trying to repeat it.
Okay, so I didn't say anything about moving on from very early.
It's. Okay, but it also referenced the document that was in here. Which does have three.
I think he was only used excerpting just three separate parts of that, is that right?
But you still, it's gonna need that to be, it's it's still there, it's like, it's nobody over that to hold it.
Well, then I I would, what would just be to move council comments after nonarranged participation between O and P.
Sure.
Yeah, okay, so so the motion, the motion, Joe's original, okay. Here. Move council comments and and after nonarranged participation. The second, after the second. Just move council comments to after the second nonarranged participation, we'll get the letter down once we figure out on the agenda. This is the council comment after second nonarranged participation. Then three, so did I get that up there?
Yeah, okay, and so the reason why I believe that's important, like in the draft rules that I I prepared, is that it provides us as an op, as a body an opportunity. As individuals to respond to things that numbers the public herself, instead of sitting there stone-faced and not giving them any.
Yes, let's handle the amendment to the motion for. There's no other comments, the then the amendment here is to amend Joe's motion to include. Having council comments following the second nonarranged participation. And we're ready, please follow votes to approve the amendment.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Griffin, yeah, other guests. Alda, yes, some of her.
Yes.
Heo.
Yes. Okay, so the original motion has been amended, so now we are voting on a package of or a motion that has the. Um first nonarranged participation and the declaration of capital of interest ahead of approval of the agenda. Uh we have added the proposed agenda item topic at the end right before journey. And we've moved council comments down after nine or the second nonarranged.
That. I'll I'll throw up a broader question, these visuals are really complex, our current ones are really bodged. It together and really weird way that it reads like they've been touched since nineteen eighty six. This feels like something that should have a work session, so we have more opportunity to speak freely and digest and poke at individual things. So this this feels to me like something we need to have a work session before we take kind of action. And so I would, I would move uh postpone and schedule a work session before the next meeting and keep it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Is there a second to that? Your work about to put it on screen? Any special on the postpone? Why?
Um I saw, I really like the changes that are on the table, I think that they. Um provide a lot more opportunity for feedback to the public. Is there a reason why we couldn't approve this tonight and then, I mean, are we not allowed to talk about it after that? I mean, I'd like to put it in place, and then if we want to talk about it after that, that's fine, I'd I'd be happy to do that, but I like these changes. And I'd like to get moving on them.
Yeah, I think kind of we can always modify our rules. Role was to agree to some, you know, in sixty days of the election, or within sixty days when the body gets together, but I read it. So no, we we can absolutely take action tonight, propose a place and then continue to talk for the two. Again, the 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 general rule is, if you've got to change your role, you'd like to get it on, get it told everybody at this meeting before. You actually vote on it, it's held always direct. So you're just not changing the rules for me to leave it.
Zach? So I have my question to Councilman Howard would be. If you could come up with making this change and then postponing action on the more complex things. Uh for a work session, so we can hammer out and see how we actually want to function.
I'm sorry, could. What?
Take action on changing the agenda order.
Yeah.
And then the bigger things, we can have a more informal discussion at a work session.
Yeah, sorry if that wasn't clear, but.
Yeah, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Make sure. All right, if the chair will allow, then I will start. The motion postponed.
Okay, so um the original motion as amended is on the table, or presented well. And please call a vote to approve that motion.
Some Pharaoh.
Yes.
Hubbard, yes. Alda, yes, Griffin, yes, Michelle's.
No.
Heo.
Yes. Okay, so motion carried. The problem is out to new business M one, which is the second of public safety.
Or so um we um had a conversation about what should be studied a few meetings ago. Um where uh Mr. Yafman and. Uh DAFD, Keith Armstrong were present and. Talked about, talked through uh some memos that David had provided, um the council indicated that we want to keep. Moving forward and um playing along and uh working through this topic. Um and uh about bring it back for the agenda today, uh so I invited uh Mr. Yafman back. Um to continue the conversation and. Um talk through how we get to the same um location.
There you go.
Uh I I didn't specifically ask David to prepare anything uh more than what was presented at the last meeting. Um but I wanted him to be here uh.
Let me, let me start, um when we met with the public or invited the public to ask questions or learned off the ballot line here, Jen, I killed one. We indicated that meeting that we might have another. Full of all the meeting on location. Everybody remember that or remember that possibility being discussed? No, we don't have to do that. So we don't feel a need to, but is there value in that, or do we want to do that, not trying to relay this if we don't need to relay it. In terms of the discussion and or the whatever the next step is. But that was a. Open meeting comment that was made there, probably the thirteen residents that the time to show up and ask questions. I I know, I know this from um. You know, the the base leading up to the ballot language, the times after the. There are several people that have said that they they didn't vote for the. The knowledge because they weren't sure that we're suspended on one or the other, and obviously the majority of the that I've been exposing for this. It would just enough to make the decision, just wondering what what this body wants to do and to. You know, to get there, we want this to be a hard item. Especially of or you know, consideration of location. That's the next step, and Justin said that we need to make a decision by February or the first meeting in February. If we're gonna move the process of getting the bond through the process, right?
For for collection or village collection this year.
We don't have to, we don't have to go that fast if you don't want to go that fast, but you know, when by this to make that decision. Yeah. I'm not sure whether I have Joe or exactly. Go. So as far as the location goes, um I think I'm ready to have that discussion, um I don't know. Other people want to get more uh input on that or have more discussion on it, um. I've been thinking a lot about the bond issuance. I. I think it's possible, maybe a better idea to wait until twenty four to do the bond issuance. One, we have about. Nine months that we have to do between the time we start going between. The design and getting it done, obviously they could go in parallel. Um also, when we do our taxes this year, taxable values are going to go up by five percent, so there is going to be. A side effect in taxes for everyone, potentially that may not be the case in a while in the year. Um also, um interest rates have been increasing and it's possible that this summer maybe could be the high point. That's all guesswork, but it's possible that's the case. We had a bond in twenty four, we would have time this year to. At sometime early this year, make a final decision on the location and then get the design started and have that placed and have it ready for. Early start in twenty four, assuming we could get started and then have a bond which we need. At that one time, and I I guess the only other question is, I guess the bond, I'm assuming the bond doesn't have to be issued. July first or June first or whatever, it could be earlier in the year. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Zach, I enjoyed it. Uh, question for Mr. Breyer, we have an opportunity to refinance the bond after a period of time. Correct?
Typically correct.
Typically, um, in my experience, I was in the room when Dexter Township went through the process of building their station. And they, I aimed the market and the interest rates and wait until they had stuff in the ground. And that caused significant hardship for them where they had to go into a deficit sending plan with the state because they didn't have money, they didn't have funds to invest in things that they had to do. Um, they had to file a report with the state every year for five years until they got out of it, fortunately, they had a very healthy fund balance, they were able to spread it, so. Um, I, my preference would be to get that wrapped up, I, we have three years to spend it, correct, invested, so. We're going to have something in the ground hopefully by that time, it also allows us to do due diligence, to do site work. To do those things that we may not be able to do out of the nine hundred ninety-nine thousand and change that we have available. That's all.
Dave?
Yeah, based on the information I've seen today, including in particular the, uh. Pro con chart that was prepared by. David, um, I mentioned it at the last meeting, I've got the first meeting in December, you can find it on the June twenty-seventh. Work session packet on page. Five, anyways, it's the one had to come. Main Street, Nav Street. What's the item that you're rating, for example, presence downtown, possibility for expansion and some remarks about it. Again, based on the information I've seen, I'm in favor of building new at the map site, I think I've said it before, for a variety of reasons, including those in this chart, including possible. Reuses of eighty-one forty Main Street, um, I would be prepared to vote. I'm making that little, making that location, I won't want to make the vote on location without being here, so I'd like that to be able to. I don't think I need to see anything else.
Zach, I have a question for Mr. Gadsden. Um, if he would be able to prepare. Not fancy high-tech, but just an overlay of the site with an area. I'm generally able to do that, and when I did it, it it didn't quite fit up, I don't know if my software is a bit weird. I think especially for the downtown site, for start, folks are considering that's important, I understand the things that move with that, that two telephone poles have to go, the road has to shift. Um, so I guess my question would be, the technically the difficult or challenging, if you'd be able to provide us that for the next meeting.
So maybe in another context, so like showing Riverview Cafe and showing the library, like.
So you have so the aerial with the the building and the parking lot, because there's, that curb gap gets a lot longer on there, reminder if anyone's dimensioned it, but it's. It goes another twenty feet towards the river, which is. Something our master plan says we don't want curb cuts in there, so I think it's a point of course to be able to see it in context.
Anything in general, the the aerial component of it will help you. It's a little bit masked right now by the graphics of the drawing, so you're going to have relative. Benchmarks what they're now, if I do the aerial, you'll see the things that in that is referring to. And you know, Joe Public want to have a better sense of. For bigger changes that are, that are going to be happening. For that.
Yeah, the the thing that I keep struggling with. On the the map site is the disruption, the I think the. The operations are going to cause coming back to the village, it's all the. It's all the ones, but maybe that's something that everybody will do still, I mean, that's my only pick up on that.
I think I have to look if we have a good piece of information from the chief historian. Run, just you can run a map, there would be data or something, I mean, we've seen this before, but just to see. And you know, in the past years, as many runs in them, how many were licensed sirens, how many were. Wouldn't be a goal, I think I can see that level of detail.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, we can, we can ask him.
Without specifics, I can't really. Like that, we would.
I hear, and we we have put that map together before, so I think we have, we have a reference point, I'll do that.
Yeah, all ones are going even. Yeah, I actually would like to see that, and I think the public would like to see that because we have that question within the public, so it would be easier to have that conversation.
Okay, then we'll bring that back. Zach?
So folks, when you look at that, be aware that up to now, all the medical runs that we do, so fire departments don't have to do medical runs. Syle until recently, if you fell down, broke your hip, that's on you, you get the ambulance, you call someone to help you out. DAFD has done all the medical runs and that's a significant, significant portion of our runs, like north of eighty percent, I don't know exactly, but it's huge. Um, we haven't had a vehicle to support those types of runs, so they'll go out with the big truck. Additionally, it provides flexibility if they're out there, then they can go into a fire or an accident or something like that. Um, the DAFD has recently. Put money, signed a contract to acquire a, an ambulance, type one ambulance, we'll get it for a year. Um, the DAFD has also approved. New staff, um, because you have to have two bodies in the ambulance to run the thing. So we will be able to provide medical support with just an ambulance. Um, so know that when you look at the medical calls, it's going to be a different type of vehicle going through than what is still moving.
So. So as far as the location goes, I've gone through and sort of the my own pros and cons on it. Um, obviously, if the venue site, there's a lot of flexibility. Um, you can't possibly be in no issues, so it's a green sign. Um, very similar to what we had the discussion about the library, the library is going to be about high school, it's a green site, they, they work out there. Had, it was going to be on one level instead of two levels, a whole bunch of other reasons that they had for that. Um. It doesn't completely address the traffic issues, I mean, few meetings ago, the authorized. Uh, traffic study to be done, that better. So at least anecdotally, the feedback we've got from the people is that there is a traffic issue there, at least sometimes during the day. Also. Our most vulnerable structures and our most vulnerable population. I would argue is the older areas of the city and. A good concentration of older people that are on medical calls is out at Cedars. Echoing what Mayor Kew said. Every. One third roughly, and. We have data for obviously, but roughly one third of the runs sort of Dexter Township, one third going Western Township. We're going to have to drive vehicles, be they ambulances, be they fire trucks through. The old village, so they're going to down Dexter and Arbor Road, or it's going to be through the side streets. I would think if they were going through the side streets, sirens would be more important because a lot of those streets don't have sidewalks. Um, you, you. They're going to have to let people know that they're coming. And. The number of runs that are going through there now is limited to the runs that are. For that area. Right now, the trucks go primarily up Central Street or they go over the bridge and leave up to Dexter Township, to those, those two thirds that they, that they go. I can tell you that I can hear the truck when it goes down Dexter and Pinky Road. Now, that being said, it's always been that way. It's never been a question, it's not like I can kind of complain and say they should go a different way because they're bonded. Which has always been that way, same thing in Central Street, same thing with, you know, on occasion, if you come back in town up Dexter and Arbor or wherever they're going, so. We're gonna impact people differently than what they are right now. I think they would, those people, if they didn't want that, would have a good argument and say, it's not been this way, you're impacting. I don't think some of the, uh, Central Street, for instance, would be able to say, you're impacting, you know, you're, you're gonna be the beneficiary in the last one. Um. The other potential is about, uh. Future expansion. I wouldn't expect that we even need. A bigger fire station now, going back to the fifties, I'm sure at that time the city probably won't need a bigger fire station in the future either. And we're, we're being told that we do need one, but at one point in time, we had. Four bays that certainly tired district. Now we have additional substations and we're going to build a larger one in Dexter. That larger one in Dexter. We either have two townships that we're partners with and. We have the ability to utilize those other facilities, or even if we look at it just as ourselves. The four or five bays that we would have a fire station should be more than sufficient to handle a town of. Four thousand forty-five hundred people. Um, I believe Ann Arbor has five stations. And most of them are roughly the size that we're talking about, and they're serving. A population that's twenty times as large as well as handling much bigger. Uh, situations. Like when there's games and football games in town. So those are the things that I look, that I was looking at as far as the, the, the fire station. When I look at the two different sites. The thing that I give the most priority on. You know, we have, we have that list that that's been laid out. But the thing is, is that that list of items. They're not all tens, right? Some of those are ones, some of those are twos and threes and fives and six and sevens. The things that there's no way to change, once you build the station at whichever site, those are the things that I'm trying to look at. Because those are the things that we'll have to live. And. When I look at the community, I think the, the impact on the service as far as where the locations are. Um, the, the other point about the, the downtown is, the downtown structures are very susceptible to fire, we have, uh, small smoldering. Fire a few years ago, can't remember how long ago it was, in one unit on Main Street, and it took out the two units next to it because of smoke, because those. Individual buildings are not sealed up one another, they're, the, you know, the, they're, they have brick walls and those brick walls are hoarse and smoke can move between those, so. If we move away from those most vulnerable areas. We can't get that back, and that's a high priority at least for me. If we start sending trucks places where they're not going now, and that changes how it affects those people, that's not something that we can fix. We're not going to be able to tell DAFD when you're going to go out to Western Township, come all the way into town, go around on parking center. It just doesn't make any sense, it's going to take two or three minutes longer to do that, and it just, from a response standpoint, they're just not going to be able to do it. So we're going to impact the community in ways that we don't even actually know at this moment, and. Those people don't know how they're going to get affected, so.
Zach? Uh, quite a clarification and a couple of questions, for those of you who haven't been on the DAFD board or aren't currently on the DAFD board. The, the ones you've been heard of, the third, 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 that's billable runs. So there are two different types of run overall. There are the billable ones, or if you get injured at your house or your house catches on fire or there's a car accident, whichever community gets in, gets it. There's another class of non-billable or shared runs. Those are runs where something on the trail, something in the school, someone walks into a fire station, or those types of things. And when you look at the actual runs, the, the shared and the paid. About a quarter of all the runs are shared ones, twenty to twenty-five percent in the year. Most of them are in the city, because they're to the schools, they're to the station, they're trail. So knowing back in your mind that it's not truly a third, a third, a third, that's just the billable runs for paying. Um. I get, I, I do have a question for staff, what do you want us to decide or what direction do you want? Because it seems like we're having the same discussions we've had for the past seven years here, and I don't know if it's beneficial getting us towards the finish line. Um. My, and I would have another question for Mr. Gadsden, um, recently learned at the DFD meeting that because of the low clearance between the fire trucks. And the ceiling in the current base that OSHA does, my OSHA does not want firefighters to stand on top of the, the apparatus. Because they can hit their heads on doors and fans and other pieces of equipment out there. Um, so I guess my question would be, my recollection is that it's a reinforced cast concrete ceiling in those bays. And if that's correct, and if it's an easy thing to pop that up a couple feet, or if that's a, a big, big expensive thing to do.
There's two types of roof structures there, one that is docked plain, which is a concrete material. That's more utilized and more in place, that's rather easy to manipulate. Uh, or in place is a little more difficult. And I'm not really sure which one. Is activated, so I don't really, I don't know what the norm area, what medicine is, it's the docked one, because it's very visible when you're up there, just don't recall in the bay, move it, so.
All right, uh, the last part will be with, with regards to traffic is that, uh. We've discussed, or at least it's been mentioned at the DFD, they had a truck that got hit when it was pulling out. Because of all the traffic and the movements there, so there was conversation very, very early about getting a signal put. For a fire station there and keeping the forty, sixty feet in front of it entirely clear traffic. So. Know that there are challenges with that site as well. That we have little opportunities to change.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Joe, that's kind of good. Um, oh, Dad, we have had instances in pass on the DFD where we've had accidents. That didn't involve any traffic at all and didn't do place in downtown, but we still have had accidents, they, they do happen, even, even without the traffic.
Yeah, we've had two that got smashed up this past winter, I recall. Two trucks. Yes, I can tell.
Okay, so we'll, we'll bring back investigation on route. We'll bring back data on runs, I mean. Um. There will be all of them, not just.
Yeah, like a vehicle, um.
Was it?
Yeah.
Is there a third thing? So. So, oh, yeah, there is, I thought, thank you, that's a third thing.
And I'll also talk to Doug and, and see if he has a sense or could put the other map of. How runs would be routed through the city. In the event of. Location versus the other, and like if, if run went to. Here's how it, how it would go to get there, whether or not it would run with sirens.
Okay.
We're just going to add, you could even, I mean, to make, compare apples to apples, you could even say, supposing that a fire station had been at map for this past year, here's what it looked like. You know, exacting runs.
Mm-hmm.
Where they run, you can see that.
Okay. Good discussion, appreciate all the input, David, thanks for participating again on this.
I don't believe.
Even the side of M two is consideration of the border review hardship guidelines for the next three. So.
Uh, I'm making motion to accept the recommendation for the border review for the hardship guidance.
When I sound, is there a second?
Again.
And. Discussion.
Zach, I, I mentioned this last year, I would, I would prefer for it to be two and a half times poverty. Uh, this will mostly affect the folks who've been in their house for a very long time and are in limited income, usually retired or some other thing. Um. Where is the table on, if you look at that money, that is not. It's a lot of money for someone, um, to exist, um, so I would move to change it to two and a half times poverty level. That's a table, I'm, I'm getting back there.
Was there a discussion on that?
Was there a discussion on that border groups?
Not not that I'm aware of, but Maria's. On mine.
Maria, was there any discussion on changing the? Multiplier of the factors?
No, there was very little discussion on the guidelines this time.
Is there anything that's. Yeah, yes, that's that's. So, Marie, you have an idea of how many applications we have and are you aware of any where an incremental would have. Address additional citizens uh concerned or situations?
We had one this year, um. I mean, he fell under the existing. Guidelines, um. Don't generally get a whole lot of contact with this, but it goes to, you know, a lot of people are either unaware or unwilling to use the tool.
So so we had one person apply for the hardship this year?
Yes, and his income level was low enough that he qualified for a hundred percent.
And I I do have the numbers, the two and two and a half. If you're interested.
Yeah, so my my motivations are those folks in that tight, tight spot, and you've heard this isn't dozens and thousands of people, so we're in the city isn't. Losing and leading money for this, providing opportunity for a couple of folks who maybe in a very hard spots, they continue to live here. Last year, we came into the meeting with it at two percent. I actually that evening had read an article in Ann Arbor and a couple of other communities had popped up in two point two because of all the COVID weirdness. Um, so even though I'm a stickler for process. Because we did it last year and it's adding additional. Leniency for folks, but it's not gonna cause harm for the city. That's why. I wanted to do it at the two point five. Well, I don't think it's received the same.
For for back to your original question. So the session on there is. And Pam, please tell about the the. Arch of guidelines for recommendations from the Board of Review.
Out there, yes, covered, yes, shows.
No.
Your head, yeah, some barrow.
Yes.
Heel.
Yes. Washington carries. Uh, the business side of M three, which will be added item, uh special slash consideration of reconsidering. The reconsideration of naming the street park by hundreds of. Does your member on the village have a place to make a home during the clear?
I'll make that one too.
Okay. Uh, one more second, five of those. Where we consider the naming of the street park. David, is there one?
Uh, so, yeah, I was at the last meeting and I am also believed on an emergency rap and so I had shared some comments. With Josh and Justin and Joe and. You, uh. About our conversation there. So I just wanna share with everybody here on council, because I wasn't able to share them at the last meeting. So I said, my sense was that members of the commission were supportive of finding some way to commemorate Paul and his tremendous contribution to the city of Dexter. My personal thought, which was shared by others, was that it was perhaps a bit too soon to decide just exactly how we do that. First Street Park seemed to have a bit of a checkered past and so was perhaps not seen as the first choice. Another member of the commission is aggressive reaching out to Paul's family after some time, see how they might like the city to commemorate Paul. I think others were in agreement. So again, the root of the conversation was that people appreciated the idea but wanted a bit more time to process the news of Paul's staff and consider the best way to. There were some additional follow-up questions, so I just wanted to clarify. You know, what's the checkered past and. You know, so I clarified, it seems like there have been some stops and starts with various maintenance and park improvements projects at the park, um. Provided some detail about that. I found a result of some survey that found that. You know, quoting from this prior to our evening, my time on council here, where that first street park is the least popular park in the city of Dexter, um. Eighty-two point six eight percent of the respondents have never even visited the park. Uh. I did indicate that, you know, the family wouldn't necessarily want it, although I think we have heard from the family that they didn't want that, but I did mention that. Given Pat's recent uh passing and the the sculpture and tool garden they had near the library, that. Clearly his family did have ideas about how they wanted to commemorate their family members in the community. Because they've done that recently. And so again, I I mean, had it been at the meeting, I I would have voted no, I guess, for all of those reasons. Uh, I did watch the video of the meeting and I appreciated the conversation you all had about it and I absolutely think everybody at this people has. The best intentions and the fondest feelings for Paul and wants to do what's right by him, um. You know, there was a letter to the editor in the paper talking about renaming the park and even a bridge to the Paul Cousins. Park and Paul Cousins Bridge and. And I, I think that's why I wanted more time to think about this because. There are likely any number of reasons um to memorial, to memorialize Paul's community at the same time. We don't want the twenty things named after him either, um. So. I think it. I think it would be nice if we had more time to um have that, you know, have that conversation and it takes some time to get input from his family, to get input. From the community and other people who you have, et cetera, um. Or that needs to happen if it's reconsidering this and undoing it and done, I think that's fine and. Regardless of what that looks like, if in the end it it ends up with. Something that his family supports and a majority of the communities, which I think. It's worth making that change for this one.
Wow.
Um, I just want to say that I, at the last meeting, was under the impression that his family did know about this. Um, I don't think I would have been comfortable voting for it. Without that knowledge. In fact, I know I wouldn't. So. Especially after what we heard tonight, I feel like. I personally feel like I I made a mistake at the last meeting and um I appreciate a lot of your comments. About collaborating with them and. Figuring something out.
So.
Um, same in the last meeting, I was also under the impression that his family was supportive of this, um. And. I I was. Pretty shocked and sad to to have that circumstance tonight of Paul signing here and that upset because. The last thing I wanted to do is to put the family in in this circumstance and, um. Yeah.
Well, just like there was some heartfelt honesty coming from John tonight, I mean, I think the. But especially we had two weeks ago was pretty sincere also. I mean, there was a lot of good sentiment and comments about. The commitments to pollinate to. To make that dark visible and the efforts that he went through to make it visible. I forget whether it was you or Sam out about. How, you know, something like this is the opportunity to maybe. To maybe shed some light on it even more so, um. And I and I guess. I guess my my thought is that, you know, nobody, nobody said in the motion. Last meeting that that's the only way he has to be recognized or remembered. And. I know I've thought about it every day since. But I don't think, I don't think that a hasty motion to just undo this. Without whatever that other answer is. Makes any sense. I mean, if we want to change it, we should have. A full change it later rather than just go back and forth about something. There's nothing wrong with. That sitting there until we figure out. If there's something else to do or something in addition to. Uh, so I I I'm not, I'm not in favor of reconsidering that motion tonight. For that reason, I traditionally sit down and we try to go and and then, you know, we'll work through it with them, uh. And others, if there's other ideas. I'm not sure we've heard all the ideas.
Wow.
I'm certain we haven't heard all the ideas and I guess that's sort of. My point and, I mean, yeah, I don't like going back and forth and undoing something that we've. But I also don't think that we. I'm not gonna say this delicately because obviously we could name a hundred things after Paul, but I don't think that we necessarily. Want to do that. So that combined with the fact that. His family is upset by this. I just, I can't, I'm uncomfortable letting it stand.
Zach, uh, so you guys may have figured out my vote last night, uh, vote one or last meeting. That I did not support because for a couple reasons, it continued to problem these past two weeks and I was a dummy and voted on principle audit instead of audit strategy. Um, this is our chance to reconsider. Our rules say it has to be at the next meeting. So my concerns and things that trouble me is that the park commission said we want to honor Paul, we'd like some time to investigate it more. And council just said, we're gonna do this now. You guys don't have to do the talk, we're gonna do it. The other thing that has troubled me is that there wasn't that consultation with the family. Um, we, we don't know which his favorite part was the thing he's most proud of doing and I think that's important. Also, as discussed here. That's our least visited park. It's the park where you go and get your drugs. And on the way to the porch next door at least two or three times a week. We'll see you going down. Um, I am supportive of recognizing his his contributions to the community. Borrowing it, I I think we we have some time to sit and think and get it done better. And. I'm supportive of it and thanks for making the motion reconsider.
For reconsideration, if we do that. That just means the motion's back at the table, right? It's like you undo the vote that happened at that one time. The. Mayor Keo is correct, until something's done, until, you know, if something's irrationally done, you can still make the. Motion to do something different in the future. I understand the council, we tonight, we have received information. That contradicted that as well. So I believe it was in the back of tonight that there was comment there that there is a discussion about trying to, uh. Ordinate the, um. The item for Pat Cousins along with with uh reading part at the time. That being said. And. That was a fairly passionate comment that was made tonight and. You know, I understand that that's not what the family wants at this point, that they reconsider and. Changed their mind or had a meeting, decided they wanted to go a different way. Then then so be it, uh. You know, um. Literally, when I made that motion, that was. That, I mean, it's exactly what was said at the time. I thought of that park as being the part Paul started that came to council that would not be there or not for him. Mill Creek Park. The bridge was on the top two or three worst bridges in the entire state. We got funding to tape it out and found out the dam was connected to it, so the dam was gonna come out and the bridge was gonna come out. And the council decided we were gonna turn it into a park. And everything up to including Mayor Keo going talking to the owner of the gas station, divided land across Shepherd from that. It's where the switchback is on the trail that's there. Um, that was a great community effort. But that was not something that was Paul's vision, Paul's dream and Paul's initiative that that came from, like for shoot purpose. And. I understand that if if people don't like it, I don't have the same opinion of that part that has been expressed tonight. So. You know, sorry, I didn't know that. I had multiple people talk to me since that point in time and saying that that was a great way to honor Paul and they thought it was fantastic. And they're glad that it happened. So. The worry thing though is that's really what it feels like there. So you, that's. That's what you said. So.
Um, question for Justin, um. In in your report that, um.
Yeah.
Your report that you spoke with the family, um, I'm wondering if you're comfortable sharing of what. That sentiment of that conversation was, was it similar to what we heard tonight? Um, because to me, uh, there are two things. One is, um. How the family feels about it and then the other thing is how they commemorate Paul, um, which. Can be this part and then some, something else. It it does not have to end with this part. Um, but there were also times that I had heard from. A very different. Sentiment about the park itself in connection with Paul.
Yeah, so so a- after council made a decision at the last meeting, um, I reached out to Kevin Cousins, who. Uh, had been up in the office several times, uh, who several members of our staff have have a good relationship with. And so I so I called him and it was the first time that that he had heard about. The concept or council's action and it was a much more positive reception than what we heard tonight. But. The action had already been taken, so I don't know whether it was, oh, thank you for doing something versus, oh, yeah, that's. That that they think for this after forgiveness, that it's it's not, it's not the gift that I wanted, but thank you for doing something, um. But it it was, it was more more positive than than what we heard today.
Zach, I'd just like to say I am. Over the moon to hear Paul's delight of knowing that there is a First Street Park and no First Street as well. That's something that's always tipped my fancy as well.
Wow.
I'd just like to say one last thing, which is. You know, I do still believe in all the the reasons why I was for this last time. Um, I do think it would be a great way to bring awareness to the park, um. But I've got to, I've just, I can't ignore Paul's understanding here saying that's not what he wants.
Okay, well, no matter what we do tonight, there needs to be a conversation over. Probably won't call his son and maybe more his granddaughter, whoever. I'm not sure who is. Necessarily on my behalf on that, but I was to need to have that conversation. I still maintain that uh there was a lot of heartfelt sentiment in what we tried to do at the last meeting and that doesn't mean that, um. There can't be more of that figuring out what the the future holds, but. I think until we have a plan, we shouldn't necessarily change it. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no on reconsideration, but it's because I don't have. Yeah, I I I think there's a a future discussion with. The insurance round a major later, but I don't think the timing was the right time yet. I think it's under wish you watched message to the. So you know further hands, oh, Sonae?
Question, so, um. The rules say that we have to reconsider this. Now and just. To learn so, but then it leaves the emotion on the original motion on the table. Which is there anything about, do we have to do any action on that tonight or is it an open ended? Motion that.
So I understand if 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 we vote, if we vote. No, my understanding is if, if, if we vote, if we vote in the affirmative to essentially reconsider, we've undone what we did. Does anybody not agree with that? Well, and then the motion will be open and we have to do something with the motion of that one. Right, you have a motion that oh, we're putting it back on again, yeah. You're essentially just taking the vote to prove it off and then you're, you're reopening it, et cetera.
That's not to say that you couldn't, that's what you're suggesting, that you could postpone it for a minute.
Well. Okay, so please follow up to reconsidering the naming.
Shells.
Yes.
And Pharaoh.
Yes.
Over, yes. All Day, yes. Griffin, yes. Keel.
No. Motion carries. Okay, so that moves postpone consideration of naming of park in Paul Cousins' honor to allow parks to have creations, more time to examine the issue. Then, by Zach, do you want to allow part to conclude that? Second of the day. It's got a what?
My only comment on that is I'm not trying to bypass parks, but if we're going to reopen this discussion with the family, do we even necessarily know that it's going to be directed to parks? So I don't think we need to wait. I, I would, I would like to just have the family first before.
Right, let's begin from home. Okay. So, okay, we did. Has moved from, with no no, I guess it's I haven't practically done the project yet. What is that? Okay, please follow up to postpone.
Shells.
Yes.
And Pharaoh.
Yes.
Over, yes. I'll drive, yeah. Griffin, yes. Keel.
Yes. Okay, we concluded our new business agenda. We're down to council comments under item ten. Uh, we start with this. Bonnie?
Um, my own comments are on, uh, we were talking about recycling a lot today and I appreciate the recycling, what, what to recycle, what not to. That was in the update. Um, and I guess I just want to remind everyone, please wash your recycling before you recycle it because if you don't, it can contaminate it. Um, and I think it's really good that we're including this mission.
Thank you. That, I remember that. Okay. Dan, how about you?
Nothing, maybe.
What?
Yeah, just two things. Um. I also don't want to hear wishy-washy about it in the community, but in a situation like this, I just I have to respect Paul's family. That's more important to me than um, the image of me going back out of vote. Um, and then the other thing has to do with recycling and I don't know if you were thinking this too, but if we went into this agreement, we just got these cars, do they recycle them? Because I don't, you know, those need to be recycled if we're going to get new ones.
So that there, that there is a cart shortage all statewide, I think. So I think that they would end up going to be good use it i- if we didn't end up with place management.
Excellent.
Which is very exciting.
Zach, uh, you did like to explain why I vote no for various things. I think they're pretty bitter today, but if anyone has specific questions, let me know. And I did appreciate, thank you for the students for not having school. Those weeks I enjoyed being able to drive places and not sit um, at intersections for very long. So thank you very much for that. Okay.
Okay, do you have background and non arranged? Is there anyone in the audience? Please welcome, right? Uh, your name and address.
Three five three nine hundred. Press here. Yeah. All right, let's start with Milledge. Oh, no, Milledge, that's like a hardship. That was a, that was a good try there. I understand that uh specifically since we just uh did a new Milledge. Everyone to go, you know, so not to mention inflation, they're going up every month and what you're having out there. So I can't believe you only had one person ever apply for this last year. So you said?
What was it? You said one person?
That's all it ever applies for?
Not, not, not ever.
I mean, you know, in the last couple of years.
Yeah, she, she, she's, she's holding up one finger, right?
Yeah. Uh, my. Uh, yeah, I just, it's amazing not, not more people apply for that. Uh, especially the seniors in town living out of, you know, total security, all that. Credit pensions. All right, uh, now D A F D, can you tell me what the budget this year is for the city's percentage? And how much will that increase by everyone who go into the annuals?
The overall spending budget that was approved is about three million dollars.
For the area wide?
For the whole, total area wide. And our portion of that is estimated to be between nine hundred and twenty and nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars based upon runs through the end of November. We haven't seen one number through the end of the year. We'll do that in January.
Right.
But it's going to be up from about seven hundred eighty-five thousand the prior year.
Is it based on runs? Or is it based on?
Based upon the cost line. We've increased the spending line to add more firefighters.
If I may add, in that increase, so that's a mill increase in our taxes, that does not include the full complement of added firefighters. We, we kicked the can down the road where we said, here's the budget spending the circles to pay any additional firefighters. There's going to be is it six firefighters?
The goal is to have six, so we can have two in each situation ultimately. So the question is when we land there.
So twenty twenty-four could go up by, so how rough the road, some hundred thousand per firefighter, a lot of those four hundred thousand. So another
How much is ambulance, ambulance cost? About a hundred grand.
Two hundred eighty-eight.
Two eighty-eight. And how much are for the, are you going to cross train your uh your firefighters or are you going to have to hire outside?
So the whole, the whole decision on ambulance and service would do it. We've, we've got the fires, we have, as I understand it, to be able to do it.
So we ordered an ambulance like?
We, we've ordered, we've started the process with the chapter thing for longest
Right.
time period to do it. The, the thought that Doug decided to concur was that if, if we got further down the road and we are meeting we could plan a session that D A F D is, our next meeting is Friday. That was in my report. If we change our minds, he doesn't see any issue with somebody else wanting ambulance because they only make a limited number. So this, this was a decision to get on the uh, get in line.
Yeah.
Our, our neighbor in, our neighbor in
I know Chelsea did it.
Yeah, Chelsea did, right. The Siles looking at doing it. And the thought is if, if, if they all do it and it's, it's less likely that H B A would have an input before them out here to consider the permits are coming in. So it's, it's a concern of sort of a circular thing.
Yeah, I know H B A is having trouble right now.
They're having trouble.
There are now uh, many issues and everyone.
So it's a preventative, it's a preventative or it's a preemptive.
A repression. Preemptive. All right, let's talk about, uh, all right, I wasn't here for Paul's sons. Anybody want to let me know what he said? That was uh oh heartbreaking. Did you feel that, Paul? We were just
Yeah.
Feel that you were just rushing something along or what?
He didn't feel that the, that the choice we made in naming First Street Park was representative of the legacy of Paul.
Didn't feel it was big enough though?
Not enough.
Oh, I wonder how Paul, Paul would feel about that. He'd be a first person to thank. What a bunch of crap. Paul's real on the back. Now, Joe played, Joe, you know, you gotta, don't feel bad about doing that. Yeah, you're having the right place. That's the one. And I can understand looking apparent, getting a little upset and thinking this and thinking that, but that ain't the way it was. And he, she ought to know that. You ain't got no responsibility if you didn't know. Joe's right. First Street Park, we have a lot to do with Paul. I can't think of a better thing to do. But if you're going to do First Street Park, probably should have ran by the park commission as a courtesy. Just to, you know, get her ducks in a row, but this was a knee jerk thing because it, it happened, what? Three days before? Before your meeting? Was it Friday? Oh, it was a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah, yeah, he passed on the ninth and we, we were too big to that.
All right, still pretty low. So um you know, Gordon Hall's asked a bit to use Paul's name as a boundary. So apparently his name can be used for the good of that. Now, I can understand the outdoor feeling, but um, you know, he was instrumental in the outdoor life. That is a call Paul cousin out of the way. Um. That's not what he was. He was a humble guy. Wouldn't look at your glory. This was just a way to honor him. Now, I'm not saying it couldn't be more done first, you know, as it could be extended and be sidewalk. There has to be a commitment to improve, but there's nothing wrong with you pulling back on your motion either. It was kind of bad or something reveals. There is always time to reconsider when you're on the long day. You want to make it mean something. You don't want it to appear knee jerk. Now, now when it happened, that appeared to be the right thing because that's the way everybody felt. But as time goes on, start looking at stuff logically and then the long term. And that's what you're going to do. So with beating yourself over the head for something you did out of love and concern. And I mean, that's your worst fault. Jeez, oh, peace. So let's see, uh, let's see. Paul was just Paul. He wasn't the B L and uh, he was a nice guy. Had his quirks and him and I have run into more than once. But you know, how would Paul feel if he was here alive today if he was the name that park after him? What'd he say? Oh, what a kicking ass, man, after all I've done. You guys are a bunch of, uh, in the merry world, you know? So keep on, you're doing fine. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, right? Is there anyone else in the audience or like fifteen? Do you, do you, anyone on, anyone speaking this evening? We're there. Okay, uh, so guys, make a motion for your, and uh, and uh, my, my, my.
Okay, Dan.
And I, Dan, I think, if I are, all of the papers, if it's time to say hi, please.
Hi, hi.
Thank you everyone for being here.